The following program is a public access production. Comcast is required to provide time on this channel and make it available pursuant to franchise agreements with the communities we serve. Comcast is not affiliated with the following program or the producers of public access programming and is not responsible for the content. The following program does not reflect the opinions of Comcast or its affiliates.
The time, the time has come for the Monday, August 5th, 2019, regular city council meeting. At this time, we ask that you put your cell phones on, you know, silent or vibrant. I notice the last two council meetings we had a few cell phones that go off just to be courteous to those who are on the dais and those who will be speaking. We ask that you silence your cell phones. With that being said, roll call please.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Mozio.
Present.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Ald- Mayor Cunningham.
Present.
His pastor, Jesus Germano, in the building? He's not.
Some pastor was here to probably speak. You just met him?
Yeah. No, that wasn't the pastor.
I didn't mean that was him.
Alright. Alright. The gentleman just came up. Looks like you're gonna lead us in prayer if you don't lie, if you do not lie. Yes.
Not yet.
Do you mind leading us in prayer? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. This was a blessing. You lead us in prayer?
Yeah, just a short prayer.
Immediately following that, Ms. Anita Hannah from the Waukegan Public School District Board will lead us in the pledge. Once he's finished, just step up and start off thinking. All rise please.
I am Pastor Mark Rollinhegan from St. Paul's Lutheran Church on Lewis and Waukegan.
Welcome.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we give you thanks for this city, for the people who live here and for the people who, who govern. We ask your blessing tonight as we deliberate, as they deliberate, and as we discuss and consider and the important matters before us tonight. And may we always keep in mind, may you always help us keep in mind, the interests of each and every person, family, child who resides here. Bless us now as, as we begin. Amen.
Amen.
My pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a quick reminder, if you choose to speak tonight for public comment, there is a sign up sheet in the back that is used for our public records. Okay? Mayor's comments. I'd like to start tonight by sending our thoughts and prayers to the victims of the horrific acts of domestic terrorism that took place in El Paso, Texas, and in Dayton, Ohio. These incidents have become too commonplace and we must do more to prevent them. We need to implement real mental health reform and common sense, and I use the word common sense, gun laws to stop this epidemic of gun violence throughout this country. I also want to take at this time to wish happy 85th birthday to the former and late Alderman Lucius Copeland's wife, Ms. Catherine Copeland.
Yay!
I'd like to take a moment to thank our public work staff, Susanna Figueroa from the mayor's office, all the Aldermen, and the kids and adults at YCC for their ongoing work to clean up city alleys as part of Operation Clean Sweep. Once the alleys do get cleaned, we're asking, we're asking that the public help us by doing their part. While you might not have littered in those alleys, but most of us live behind these alleys that we're cleaning up. So if you see some litter in the alley, vegetation needs to be trimmed or cleared on or off your property. Feel free to pick them up or give us a call, the Public Works Department, City Hall, or call your Alderman. Over the last three years, we've made a conscious effort to go through the alleys of our city, not mine's or the Alderman's, but ours, to make sure that this happens. We're pleading for your help right now. How all of Waukegan looks reflects on all of us. And if we all do our part, I know that this will be, will continue to be, the best city in the land. With that being said, I'll use a few, a couple of minutes to Alderman Kirkwood to take the, to take the floor to clarify some, some things. Alderman Kirkwood.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to provide some clarification for the public. I recently purchased a long seen restaurant here in Waukegan which has a liquor and gaming license. As a result, I have abstained from voting granting liquor license here on the council floor. Last week, I met with a resident who brought to my attention that my business's state paperwork wasn't correctly updated to reflect my win in the automatic election. I've been working on this purchase since 2017 prior to running for election. Have contacted the state as well as the company that filed my paperwork, and that paperwork is now being accurately amended to recognize my election as your fourth ward Alderman. I appreciate the residents pointing that out to me. I'm here for you if you need me. I welcome anyone who ever has questions to please call me at 844-484-9273. Contacting me by phone is a much quicker way to get ahold of me than Facebook. Thank you very much.
Upcoming events. Free Tuesday concerts at Steiner Pavilion continue with the Waukegan Band's final concert of the season tomorrow, followed by the Illinois Brass Band on Tuesday, the 13th. Waukegan High School Bulldog's Marching Band on the 20th, and Shout Section Big Band on the 27th. Free concerts also take place every Friday evening at 6:00 PM in the Main Street Plaza at Genesee and Madison, offering a wide variety of music, much like Steiner. You have to bring your, your own chairs or blankets. The Waukegan Public Schools is hosting a resource fair for students and families at Miguel Juarez Middle School on Saturday, August the 10th at 9:00 AM. And I think that goes to 12:00 PM, is that correct, school board members? From 9:00 to 12:00. There, there we get free backpacks filled with school supplies would be handed out to the students who attend while, while supplies last. So basically get there early. August Art Walk on Saturday, the 17th will include Shred Fest and Blues Night featuring Lonny G. and the Downtown Arts and Entertainment District and Afro Fest at Steiner Pavilion. Also on Saturday, the 17th, two walks will take place as part of the Go Waukegan and Go Lake County Initiatives. Walking in Nature with the Lake County Health Department in Lyons Woods at 4:00 PM, and the Glow Walk with the Waukegan Park District at Beavie Park at 8:00 PM. Real Men Grill event will take place Saturday, August the 17th, from 12:00 to 5:00 PM at Lions Academy Campus located at 1011 Porter Street. And I will be one of the celebrity grillers. I'm gonna have some help, y'all, I just want you to know that now. So come out and support the Lions Academy Campus. It is a fundraiser. At this time, I'm gonna ask Jane Ferry to come up to honor Jose LeMonge. Jose has been a tremendous asset to Waukegan in his help with Art Walk and other city events. Jane!
Thank you, Mayor. Jose, since I know you're here, please come up. Jose has worked with us on a number of occasions. He is the head of Audio Beings and he has been instrumental in a number of art walks where we didn't have music. He was happy to bring some DJs, huge speakers, lights. Some of you saw it. Some of them were laser shows. They were kind of fun. But I really wanted to point out two things that he really stepped into and stepped up to. And one of them was Pride Walk. It was our first Pride Walk. He did a dance party. We had about 1,200, or 1,200, it would be nice if we had 12,000. About 1,200 people attend Pride Walk and we hope, of course, it's bigger and better next year and we hope you're gonna be part of it again next year. And he also did Red, White &amp; Boom at the lakefront on July 4th. And as the mayor can attest, this was something we didn't anticipate. We thought maybe a couple of DJs would be out there, and instead they built stages, they brought ladders and drills. This was outstanding. And we had about 1,000 people at one time. So throughout the day, we probably had several thousand come through, dance, enjoy. And we just wanted to say thank you. We are so Waukegan proud of you, you can't imagine, and we hope that continues.
Right. Front Art Walk, we know, is in a similar position. If you're not here for the Waukegan Proud Awards, and I know it's supposed to be speaking into the mic. If you're using the Waukegan Proud Awards, this is not for the mayor to present, but it's for all of us, all of us on the daisies and those in your city leaders, to let you know that we are proud of you for what you're doing to make Waukegan the best city in the land. So thank you, sir. Congratulations to you.
Jose, did you have people you wanted to bring up for a picture? Nope. I just thought what you wanted to say. Okay. Hang on.
I don't have this in plan. Alright. I didn't really have this planned out. I didn't really think what was gonna go on tonight. But I appreciate for you guys allowing me to do this for the Fort de Jive. And hopefully, we could keep doing more events like this, you know, with Waukegan allowing me. I mean, we're willing, Audio Beings is willing to work with all levels of music, from dance to jazz. We also did that, oh, what was that one event? I know Josh was there at the lakefront with Brad Berber. Yeah, we had a cello hooked up to the system. It was pretty neat. So, like I said, nothing can, like, we're willing to work with anybody. If you guys have any ideas, if you guys got plans, let us know. You know, we'll come out for you guys, any day, any weekend, whatever. We're open to the public. So guys, get ready because we got some more coming.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Jose. You know, more importantly, he works with a lot of young men and young ladies in teaching them about this audio thing. As long as the mic is clear, we always happen as an end user. The next presenter, I'd like to ask, or should I say invite, our president of the College of Lake County, Ms. Lori Sutick. President Sutick is going to talk about the College of Lake County Lakeshore Campus Expansion. Alright. Been waiting for this, Dr. Sutick.
Uh-huh, that's what I hear. Good evening. Alderman, thank you, and Mayor Cunningham, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. Before I speak specifically to the Lakeshore Campus, I would like an opportunity just to kind of give you a quick overview of some things that are happening at the college. It's an exciting year that we're rolling into. We are celebrating the 50th anniversary of the College of Lake County this year. And we look forward to a series of events that we'll be inviting many of the, or the community to our three campuses so that we can engage and connect with all of you and, and likewise. So we're also rolling out our 2024 strategic plan. This plan was just recently approved and has been the primary work for me over the past year. It includes six pillars, and those pillars will serve as the guideposts of our work for the next five years. Those pillars include access and success, equity and inclusion, teaching and learning excellence, community and workforce partnerships, collaborative culture, strategic use of resources, and teaching and learning excellence. So that is our focus and we will stick true to those things. We also refreshed our mission, revised our vision statement, and established a new set of values based on input from students and employees and the community. So we will be holding a community state of the college address in September. We will be sure to communicate with all of you that date and time. If you're available, we'd encourage you to come, and you can hear more about the work that we have underway. I do want to mention that this strategic planning process engaged over 300 community members, workforce partners, students, and employees. And it resulted in a reorganization within the college. Because one thing we heard was that people felt as though we were difficult to navigate and that we'd kind of closed our doors a little bit to the community. So we have a new unit at the college and it's called the Community and Workforce Partnerships Area. It is led by a vice president, Dr. Ally O'Brien. So Ally's responsibility is to be out in the community, working in partnership with our Lakeshore Campus Dean, and engaging in strategic directions to grow our community and workforce. We have four industry sector areas for prioritization in programming development and growth within this plan. Those include healthcare, information technology, manufacturing, and education. It doesn't necessarily mean we won't create new programming in the other industry sectors, but these were identified based on all of our environmental scanning as the growth areas and the greatest skilled workforce needs for Lake County. This plan also is significantly attached to a rollout in student success and equity work at the college. And we've joined with some national and regional partners in that work. I also just want to mention, we are launching our master planning process for this year that we hope to wrap up in June of 2020 for the next capital phases of development at the college. Specific to the Lakeshore Campus, lots of exciting things going on. I'll start with the new building, which seems to be of interest to everyone. The biggest question I receive is, is it going to happen? I am committed to making sure it happens, but that is working in partnership with the state. The state has allocated the resources to fund this building. They have not yet released the funds. They're waiting for us to secure our match of dollars, which the college is in good financial position to do its match for this project as well as the other capital projects that we were very fortunate to receive in the budget process. We are targeting a groundbreaking for the late fall of 2019. We will keep you informed on that. And the building completion, it will be a couple of years to build, but spring of 2022. A good majority of the items in the existing building will switch over into the new one. It presents a significant opportunity for us in our master planning process to re-envision the existing building and determine what new programming will go into those spaces. An important part of our design on the new building is that we want to ensure that the spaces in that building reflect the diverse cultural, the communities that we serve. So a focus for us is to create culturally relevant spaces that the community feels welcome and comfortable. We are also working as an aspiration to really design this campus as the urban campus it really is. And so we're really working to explore what does that mean? And typically, urban campuses have a really great integration of learning and services that meet the needs of the community. So we're looking forward to building out that element. We will also be working hard to ensure that we're growing and reaching out to minority business vendors for the construction of this building so that we're engaging all of our community in that construction. In the current year for the Lakeshore Campus, there have been many investments made for program growth and to demonstrate our commitment to Waukegan and its surrounding communities. We started with the Lakeshore Commitment last year where we ensured that classes would not be canceled on this campus, which would cause students to have to travel to the Grayslake Campus. We know that transportation is a struggle for many of our students. And so creating that inequity is a problem. So the Lakeshore Commitment ensured that classes ran at the Lakeshore Campus. We have also invested close to $900,000 to expand the Mechatronics Lab and programming both at Grayslake, but bringing that program to the Lakeshore Campus. We just recently equipped that lab at One North Genesee. That program will begin this fall, and we've already established dual credit programming with Waukegan High School. We will also have heating, ventilation, air conditioning, and refrigeration, mobile lab onsite here at the Lakeshore Campus for delivery to the community in this area in that high demand field. We are also expanding the phlebotomy program here at the Lakeshore Campus. And we've committed resources for a dedicated recruiter to the Lakeshore Campus that will focus on the northeast region of this county. We're also building out support and services for students at this location. We're building out technology integration where if there is a class that doesn't have full enrollment, by technology, not by sending a student to a different location, will create access for them to complete that class at the Lakeshore Campus. We are also creating that technology so if there is not a counselor or advisor available, they can connect to those services from the Lakeshore Campus to the Grayslake Campus. We're also implementing a goal to expand our new student orientations to all three campus locations. So students who take classes at the Lakeshore Campus begin and end there, and they identify with that campus as their home base. We're also increasing extracurricular activities so we can create a more vibrant feel to this Lakeshore Campus. I'll wrap up with partnership and alignment. CLC, as we move forward, is extremely interested in partnering with the city of Waukegan on its economic and community development plans. It is our goal not to be a competitor in market, but to be aligned with the businesses and industry that are in growth mode. So it's critically important to us that we understand what those plans are. And we'll want to make sure that we have visible presence at important meetings so that we can align our future development as we re-envision the, the old building for its renovation and for the expansion of programming within the new space. And I also want to express appreciation to the city of Waukegan, to Mayor Cunningham, and to all of you for the support that's been demonstrated and partnership in assisting us as we've been working through the phases necessary to begin the launch for this new building. And personally, I just want to say, I've recently wrapped up my first year anniversary as president at CLC. And I will say, of all the locations in this county, the city of Waukegan has hugged me more times than I can count and welcomed me to this place. And I have deep appreciation for your welcomeness in that regard. Thank you. Questions?
Any questions? Madam President? Sorry.
I just have a comment. I'm super excited about what's going on with CLC in general and especially in our downtown. And I want to thank you for that, and I want to thank you for being here tonight to tell us about it.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? As always, Madam President, you have, from day one, since you started, you have opened not only the Grayslake Campus, but the Lakeshore Campus. I noticed that you have Derek back here. How you deal with Derek who kind of oversee that for you right now? And your idea of what the Lakeshore Campus will play in our downtown has been boosted with this news. But more importantly, how you have positioned the entire vision of moving College of Lake County. And correct me if I'm not correct, if I'm wrong here, but I think of your student population, the city of Waukegan, what, is it 17%?
It's a large amount, yeah.
17% of College of Lake County student population comes from the city of Waukegan. So that partnership that you're talking about, it's just not for today. It's for, it's, it's to last forever. Why? Because I'm looking for that student population to grow. That means that our young men, our young ladies, working with our Waukegan Public School Districts, if they do not have a college or university, our forces for trades, they can then go to right here in Waukegan and find their way to greatness. So thank you and your team for what we're looking for over the next 20 years. Congratulations and happy anniversary.
Ah, thank you.
And that concludes the mayor's comments. Item two will be audience time. Madam Clerk.
Yes. Three minutes. The first up, Ralph Peterson Jr.
Hello, everyone. I come here tonight, and it wasn't easy to come here and do what I'm getting ready to do. But I do view myself as a man. And if I do something in public, I have no problem undoing it in public. Today was a culture shock for me today. I attended a meeting in Libertyville in reference to this reenactment of the Civil War. And I had never, I've seen it on YouTube, I've seen it on old 1950 clips. A certain mentality, selfishness, stubbornness, racist attitude. But I had never encountered it in proportion like I did today. And it shocked me. And I came here tonight, and I'm speaking from my heart. I felt bad. We've had a lot of misunderstandings, Mayor. I do not agree with a lot of your decisions. But in order for me to feel good about myself and try to have some understanding, because things are not fair nor right in Lake County. And it's purposed that way. I apologize to you. I've said some pretty rough things to you. Now, whether you accept, that's your business. I extended the olive branch to you. And whether you accept it or not is not important to me. It's important that I apologize. And likewise to your mother, I seen them give her hell today. I seen them give her hell today. I never encountered a people to know that history is a lie. The Indians were slaughtered. Christopher Columbus did not discover America. The Lone Ranger was not white. This is fact, not something I'm making up, and I encountered a bunch of people that hooted and hollered and cheered each other on and got angry when the truth were told to them, and even worse, I viewed a board, the Lake County Board, catering to this mentality. I gotta go back to the drawing board. You're not my enemy. We have a sick mentality in Lake County.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Thank you. Les Stefner?
Good evening, City Council, Mr. Mayor, and City of Waukegan. Les Stefner, homeowner, resident here in Waukegan, here to speak about the proposed casino idea. Couple points. You know, the state windfall, or the predicted windfall, never materialized the way they planned for it, and the state legislators who passed this, the legislation to expand gaming in Illinois about 10 years ago, they haven't seriously looked at the numbers to see how successful it has or hasn't been, but the numbers bear out that it hasn't been. And I fear that this city council should make the same mistake in accepting the idea of having a casino here. Nationwide, gaming revenues are down. There are five, in five other states that have expanded gaming, the revenues did not match predictions. I personally grew up in Nevada. I don't know if anyone else here has, but I grew up there, and I know the impact that gambling has on communities and families. I personally know the effects of what it's like when my mother was working as a minimum-wage, you know, cleaning lady at those hotels. So, you know, in the less than 10 years that we've had expanded gaming here in Illinois, we have 30,000 machines. In the entire state of Nevada, there's only 18,000. How does that happen? I'm not against gaming, but I am concerned about a casino that is not likely to produce the revenue that we predict. We don't have the infrastructure, we don't have the fire department, we don't have enough of police department, and there's no guarantee that the so-called jobs that they, that they claim will come here are gonna go to Waukegan residents. The average, you know, person that gets hired at a casino are people who are retired, are middle-aged Caucasian women. That's not our demographic here. That's not inclusive. And I just think that the sellout of this property to a casino is a bad investment. Investors, they look to get what they can and move on. If it fails, we're stuck with another large abandoned property. And, you know, what I'd like to see is some green space, affordable housing, where young mothers can walk to work and then drop their kid off into daycare and then walk home and then, then enjoy that time with their kids, you know? I'd like to see maybe a venue, maybe a small convention center that would be an option for people who don't want to drive to Milwaukee or Chicago and pay those costs. We're right smack in the middle, right between Milwaukee, and it'd be a great draw for the business community. That's my thoughts. Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you. Diana Burdette?
This Wednesday at City of Waukegan City Council Chambers here, 100 North Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., there will be a public hearing regarding the permit to increase Medline's stack height. The research has shown that elevating its stack height increases the area of burden to a larger population. It doesn't reduce the severity of the toxin, it increases the area of burden. I want it to be clear that the emissions have not been eliminated, and the problem persists, and the state legislation will not curb that. I hope that people come and express their concerns. At a state level, the 180-day clock started ticking, and if Medline doesn't lower the risk to the regulated limit of .2 parts per billion, which is still 10,000 times higher than the actionable limit of the EPA at .02 parts per billion, by December 18, the facility should be shut down. Sadly, if we do not hold these, those in power accountable to enforce the limits, history has shown that they won't, and the facility clearly won't. Community, we are on our own. We must unite and join together to ensure our own safety. All levels of officials have confirmed that our lives and risk of burden are worth than, worth less than the dollar that goes into the capitalist pockets. We, the community members, our children, and future generations have to shoulder the burden of legacy toxins. We will have to shoulder the high, high risks that a casino brings, the fear of family separations, the continual burden of oppression and racism, and we have to become our own advocates, because these days are getting longer and harder each day.
Thank you. Dylan Burdette?
Mayor, question, question real fast. Diana, did you say the meeting was on Wednesday?
Yeah.
Is that Thursday? I think it's planning and zoning, isn't it?
Yeah, it's not Wednesday.
Yes. Yes, actually, it's not Wednesday, it's Thursday. It's planning and zoning. Just, Noel, is it 6 to?
No, it's 7 o'clock.
Oh, it's 7. All right, 7 to whatever.
They only have jurisdiction over the height, they don't have fraudulent jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you. But, Diane, thanks for letting us, everybody know that. Appreciate it.
Hello. In our community, as I try to spread the word about the dangers of ethylene oxide, I talked to lots of people. One of the longstanding people that I've had a lot of conversations with is a business owner, longstanding business owner here in Waukegan, who recently acquired some property by the Medline plant, and only found out after he had acquired that property about the ethylene oxide issue. He and I have had several conversations over the past few months, and the most recent conversation that we had was when I was out there with CBS talking about air testing that had just begun. He was very pleased about this, as he thought this meant good things for him and his employees and the environment of his business. He was very confused when he got a letter regarding this increased stack height at the, from the zoning board, and wanted to know what was happening. He was under the opinion that once this air testing happened, once we knew about the problem, then it would be fixed. He's asked me to come and talk to some of the other business owners from the area so that they can come to this meeting and be accurately informed and ask proper questions about this. Another thing that I run into a lot, as I'm talking to lots of officials, is a surprise and a need to hear more. When I do get pushback, I seem to get the exact same pushback from all elected officials. I get things where people say ETOs in car exhaust, ETOs in bananas, occurs naturally, and we shouldn't worry about it. I hear these same things over and over so many times that I had to find out where they were coming from, and turns out that they come from a PR firm headed by Jane Tita, who made a name for herself, casting doubt on the relationship between asbestos and mesothelioma. She was hired last year to cast doubt on the link between elevated levels of ethylene oxide and cancer. From what I've seen, she's been pretty successful, and despite her arguments having almost no water holding scientifically, her PR firm has done a great job of disseminating her message, despite her own colleagues in industrial hygiene calling her behavior one of the clearest examples of scientific fraud in recent history. I urge you all to be aware of this and do not fall victim to fraudulent scientific behavior. There are elected officials at multiple levels who are more than ready to trade their constituents' lives and health for revenue generated, and those that believe that the health of others who use the products that are created at the Medline here in Waukegan, their health is more important than the health of our constituents and our community members. Be aware of what is happening, and be aware that we need to look out for ourselves and advocate for ourselves at a community level. Thank you.
Thank you. Selena Gomez-Balors.
Your Honor?
Alderman Mosey.
Real quick, I mean, I wouldn't usually do this. So, the zoning board is hearing an appeal about the stack at Medline, correct?
Yes.
That will eventually come to us.
Yes.
If we deny it, what happens, Superior Council? Are they, are they just trying to come within regulations by lifting their stack height higher? Is that what they're?
What they've applied for before the US, or before the Illinois EPA is to, is to increase the stack height as well as install additional scrubbers and other materials. We don't have any jurisdiction over the other.
Just the stack height.
The other methods and processes and machinery that's put in there. The only thing we have is an ordinance that simply says the overall height of stacks in Waukegan is set, I think, at 40 feet, and they're asking to go to 60 feet. That's our only regulatory power.
At the end of the day, it's just window addressing, to me. I mean, they're just trying to window address it. Okay, thank you.
I brought some more good library news for you all. I put a flyer there. Amanda whipped me up a quick flyer. Our Ray Bradbury statue dedication will be August 22. Everyone needs to know that we'll be closing at 2:00 p.m. that day to the public to set up for the celebration and for our VIP event, our donor event. We will be having the public celebration at 6:30, and at 7:30, the dedication, the corner in there in front of the library will be closed off. We'll have a presentation by the Waukegan Symphony. The library staff will be doing various programs for kids and adults. It should be a lot of fun, a lot of fun. I also want to mention that the work to bring the statue to the library will be beginning this Wednesday. So, you'll see some "Pardon Our Dust" signs at the library, but your, your access should not be impeded. It should all be fairly well-contained. You'll see new landscaping, you'll see a new base for the statue, and the statue won't actually come until later on this month. I do want to mention that we had some wonderful in-kind donations in, to get this together, from Stukey Construction, Dynacoil, and Meco Steel erection for installation of the statue. It should be fantastic. If you've not seen our Facebook page, or if you've not seen the pictures, please do go to our Facebook page or our website for some pictures of the statue as it is at the moment. So, I want to just make sure that you all are aware of that. I also want to mention that it, the, the funding for this was citizen-led. It is now an official committee of our foundation and led by the previous library director, Richard Lee, Lori Nierheim, Harry Kame, Ty Rohr, and many other people, but these are the people I see every month, and I really thank them for their dedication to bring this to the library and to the city of Waukegan. I also want to mention that our school lunches will be ending on August 19. It's a Monday, it's an odd day to end, but that's what, that's what they gave us. So, we do still have school lunches for kids. I also have some extra calendars for the summer so that, ooh, they're sticking together. So that you can still see what's happening for the rest of the summer, and this was just our first summer newsletter. In the fall, you'll be seeing newsletters coming to your home again in this type of format rather than individual calendars going out to the schools. So, every household should be receiving a new newsletter for this fall, for programs this fall. I think, oh, and then tomorrow, we're having our first big census meeting. Some invitations went out last week, and this week, we had a huge list, so some people got them today, some people got them last week. I apologize for that, so I hope those that can make it will be able to do that tomorrow at 1:00. So, that's all I have, unless you have questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Anita Hannah?
Aldermen and the public, you all know that I don't come and speak at the city council, I kind of stay in my lane. Well, right now, I am speaking because my lane was kind of overstepped into. So, and I must say that I am here as a single Board of Education member, 23 years on the board, a taxpayer, and a lifelong resident of Waukegan. My longevity on the Waukegan Board of Education has gifted me with many opportunities to be involved in the, on, in the city, and one such goings-on was regarding a casino. Under the previous mayor, the late mayor, Richard Hyde, I was invited to be in attendance at the conception of bringing a casino to Waukegan, at Fountain Square. At that press conference during the mayor's tenure, he committed $3 million per year to go to the Waukegan School District. He, he committed that. Now, I've since learned that there's all kinds of processes and procedures that need to be taken, but I am here because I could not believe what I read in the newspaper. But you all know that we didn't get the license at the, at that time, under Mayor Hyde, so that meant that the district didn't get any revenue as well. Fast-forwarding onto now, Waukegan has been granted to move forward with a casino, but unfortunately, Mayor Cunningham and the city council, some of them, have rejected the idea of benefiting the school district, any proceeds at all.
Thank you, Ms. Anita. Thank you.
So, how can I talk longer?
You can't. Next time. Thank you. Chris Fosberg?
My name's Chris Fosberg. I'm born and bred in Waukegan. I'm also a property owner in the town. I've got 38 units in Waukegan, I've got 101 units in the surrounding area, so I've got a very big vested interest in what's going on here. I'm here to talk about gambling. I'm gonna dwell, people have talked about the casino already, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the machines and how the perception that they're successful or something is somewhat of an illusion. The machines have brought in, have taken $88 million out of the pockets of the community since 2012. They took $22 million out of the pockets of the community last year alone. With a population of 90,000, we're talking about $244 for every man, woman, and child in this town. As we know, it's highly addictive and especially drawn to the most vulnerable of our community, mainly the seniors and the poor, and I understand that the state has promoted an expansion where we're now gonna have six machines per establishment, and the maximum bet is gonna double. So, things are gonna get worse rather than better. I would encourage each and every one of you to please visit maybe the top-five gambling establishments in this city and have a look at what's going on and see the people that are pouring their money into these machines. I want to talk about the economics of it. The machines, with $22 million that they brought in last year, 35% of that, or $7.7 million, went to the machine, went to the local drinking establishments that get these machines. The city got a paltry million, 1.1 million, and then 60% of that money left the city in the pockets of the gaming industry and the, and down, down to Springfield. If we didn't have the machines, what would happen? We'd have $22 million staying in the community, the city would still be collecting their 1.5% sales tax when people spend that money in the city. 7% would leave and go down to Springfield, but 93% of that money would stay local. It would be spent in local businesses, it would be spent in grocery stores, mechanics, plumbers, electricians, service industry, et cetera. All of these businesses create jobs. The bar owners and, and machine vendors, they're not creating jobs, they're putting machines in there, and that's all they have to do to, to increase their revenue. So, what hap, what hap- So what happens? This is a circular thing that goes on. We create some jobs with the local community because the money is spent locally. That money gets paid to the local community. They re-spend it in the community, and it keeps recirculating in our community. Sixty percent of it does not leave the way it's doing now. So the idea that the city is better off-
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Is a fallacy.
Thank you.
I urge you to consider that when you're thinking about the casino.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bill Powers?
My name is Bill Powers with RTO Property, Mayor, Alderman. I just, I want to kind of echo some of Chris's points on the gaming. You know, it's something that the community has embraced, and I would say unfortunately. One of the things that I wanted to echo in Chris's comments is the amount of money that goes to the bar owners here in town. If we're going to leave these machines in our community, at least the council could do is look at a higher fee to charge these bar owners so that we could take some of that money, and I think the school board could use a little bit. You know, there's only a thousand dollars per machine that's charged to the bar owners right now. And if the council would consider five thousand dollars per machine, it could be a million dollars more that this community could gather from an activity that really is detrimental to the community. But at least some of that could go back into the community in a way that could be helpful. You know, some of the numbers are staggering to me. I was just looking at them today. You know, Up North Pub, seventy-six thousand dollars in the first six months. Louis', seventy-one thousand dollars in the first six months. Bertrand Bowl, ninety-three thousand dollars in the first six months. You know, I understand that, you know, costs in communities go up. You know, our property taxes in the past three years on our properties have gone up from two-hundred thousand dollars to almost six-hundred thousand dollars. I get it. You know, there's bills to pay, and, you know, you have to pay your fair share, but it just, it doesn't seem like that the bar owners are paying enough for the dollars that they're earning now, and these dollars just continue to go up. So I would ask the council to consider a higher fee on those. Thank you.
Thank you. David Villalobos?
David Villalobos, former Alderman. For four years sitting on the dais, a lot of the decision-making was made on the topic of finances and money. And the occasions I'd bring up the social impact, I'd be challenged on that mentality. But I believe it's necessary in government to keep in mind the social impact on what we do up there, what you do up there now, goes in my mind. And so this idea, so we're in the middle of a comprehensive land use plan, like arranging this, right? We're talking about how we're going to use our land and the structure of it for the future of Waukegan. And somehow, we've neglected to incorporate some sort of community aspect for a casino in Waukegan. All the dialogue is like, it's a done deal, right? But it's not. It's not a done deal. You all have to vote on certain levels to approve it and make it move forward and become a finalized deal. So there's still time and space to actually get feedback from the community on how we want to use our land in this community. And I'd be interested to hear what that dialogue looks like. I imagine most people I talk to are not for casino. The people I talk to are for casino are often about the economics, or so they've heard, the economic aspect of it, but that's clearly getting refuted regularly. So I ask of you to contact Ratio, put together a community meeting to actually talk about land use of that space and what we want there as a community. Okay? So please do that soon. All right? I know you can. All right? It's doable. But again, we talk about being up here and making decisions that impact the community for the next twenty years. Definitely hear from us. All right? I would request that, and I ask that you request it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Dye?
Our favorite conversation about casinos. There was three-hundred-and-seventeen thousand dollars or more spent by Michael Bond to get four seats on city council. Six took money, four were successful. Of that six that took money, I could only find two that put in money of their own, which was a fraction of what the gaming industry paid for those campaigns. Alderman Kirkwood, I want to thank you for clarifying the filing error, which was corrected about two hours ago. Why was the filing filed seventeen days ago, signed by you, the owner of the company and one-hundred percent owner, that had no members of the public office? If my post on Facebook came as a shock, imagine my shock when I found out that you were taking money from the gaming industry as an Alderman of Waukegan. According to my understanding, you must abstain from all alcohol votes for your four years in office because you own alcohol license. It's awesome I understand that you don't have to abstain from gaming votes as Alderman, but I would expect as a moral person that you would do so. How is this okay, everybody, for a gaming owner to vote on gaming in Waukegan? How can you vote on gaming issues when gaming pays for almost, if not all, of your campaign for office? If you have an opinion that this is wrong, you shouldn't do it. A lot of people up on the dais came to be religious. I must not, I must not go to the same church as you guys go to. I never thought lies of omission and taking money from the gaming industry was virtuous. They call Las Vegas Sin City. So why are you all pretending that Jesus wants a casino in Waukegan? Taking money from gambling and spreading misinformation is not a verse I've read in the Bible. Where's the financial windfall from a casino coming from? Show me the facts. I'm a financial guy. I have an MBA in finance. You all know this. I've spoken to all of you individually. Show me the numbers. If it's not us, someone else is going to get it. They're going to make a few bucks. Show me the money. Show me, show me how it works. You guys can all claim about Nextdoor might get it, we might save a dollar to you. It's going to cost us more than we're going to bring. Study after study after study shows us this. But yet, we hear from Michael Bond. You want people to be all-in in Waukegan? Be all-in for the residents of Waukegan, not for Gray Lake resident Michael Bond. He said to himself in the paper today, he put together a great team for his proposal for a casino in Waukegan. I'm guessing the donations for Alderman in Waukegan were a great part of this team. Have a great night.
Thank you. Lisa May? Lisa May?
My name is Lisa May. I live at 402 Glendening Place. I'd like to address the council this evening to encourage each and every one of you to do two things that I believe are your duties as representatives of your respective wards. First, I ask you to solicit input from your residents on the important issues that you'll be considering in the coming weeks and months, particularly those involving video gaming and the almighty casino. Secondly, I ask you to research the facts surrounding video gaming and casino gambling in the state of Illinois. Pay particular attention to the numbers because numbers don't lie. Discover the facts surrounding projected revenue and the history of how projections have consistently fallen short here in the land of Lincoln. I recently attended a community meeting where there was someone from each ward in attendance, well, except for the fifth ward, and everyone in the room had grave concerns about a casino being developed in our community. As far as the fifth ward goes, I don't think they have to worry. Alderman Newsom has built her reputation over the years as a committed and consistent opponent of gambling and liquor expansion. A vote to sell any of Waukegan's property to a casino developer is a vote in favor of the casino. I'd be willing to bet that the residents in Alderman Newsom's ward expect their Alderman to oppose any proposal of this nature. We are all familiar with Alderman Tempest's famous history lessons over the years here at city council. It's time for this city council to learn a little history about how the state of Illinois has fumbled each time they've taken on gambling. From the lottery that was going to save our schools to video gaming that was going to fund jobs and infrastructure, here we sit with increased debt, crumbling infrastructure, and underperforming schools. The Video Gaming Act was approved in 2009, and by the time they got their act together in 2012 to go live, our state had borrowed more than five billion dollars on video gaming anticipated revenue. The debt repayment was three-hundred-and-forty million, and video gaming brought in less than ten percent of that three-forty, thirty million they brought in. Money was drawn from other sources, worsening Illinois's financial woes. Video gaming has continued to grow while the casino revenues continue to decline, with the exception of Rivers. This cannibalization has contributed to a twenty-two percent decline in education funding in our state. Six additional casinos will assure that we have saturation on top of cannibalization, sure to be caused by the expansion of video gaming. The casino in 2005 was six-hundred-and-ninety-nine million dollars. That was before Rivers. In 2018, that revenue was two-hundred-and-seventy-two million dollars, which represents a decline of sixty-one percent over the past thirteen years.
Thank you. Thank you. Joe Kapsic? Joe?
In the matter of the mayor appearing in ads for the Waukegan Music Festival, the legal issue at hand is this: whether it constitutes taxpayer fraud, an illegal use of taxpayer funds, for elected officials to appear in advertisements for public events. Since, as the mayor said in the last meeting, this is a tradition started by a previous mayor, we shouldn't blame the current mayor for this, but we should only find fault if he continues this practice because this practice is wrong. It benefits all incumbents, not just the mayor, whoever he happens to be at the time, but all elected officials who are up for reelection if you allow their names, faces, or titles to appear in ads for public events. It's arguably a misappropriation and misdirection of public funds to promote an incumbent candidate's campaign. I think this is a delicate legal issue that should be handled by the Illinois Supreme Court and not argued out in public between the mayor and one of the Aldermen. I think the mayor should recuse himself from this controversy because of the possible conflict of interest involved. So I think it needs to be made clear to the public that the mayor did not personally give the festival to the people of Waukegan, but that they raised the funds themselves, and it's the people's festival, not the mayor. I think we should end this practice before someone gets charged with taxpayer fraud, before the courts have to get involved. I think that would solve this problem quickly. Last meeting, you guys celebrated that a federal court ruled against including a citizenship question in the 2020 census. But just a week ago, on July 29th, NPR reported that the US Census Bureau sent out census forms that included the citizenship question to two-hundred-and-forty thousand households. They sent out questionnaires that did not include the citizenship question to another two-hundred-and-forty thousand, and the Trump administration says, "Don't worry, this was only a test." And rightfully criticized for not doing this test long enough until the 2020 census. There's five months until 2020. We should implore Governor Pritzker to endorse Jeffersonian nullification, to invalidate the action of the ICE within the Illinois state boundaries, and not to instruct Illinois police to not cooperate with them and for people not to participate in the census, which is only supposed to include a question of how many people live at this address. All other questions are unconstitutional. ICE was considered, ICE didn't exist seventeen years ago. Easily, what it's doing is not constitutional, and the governor's within his power to prevent the carrying out of unconstitutional laws on, you know, his jurisdiction, Illinois. And also, there's a reason why these people are urging us to participate in the census is because they make money off of the fact that we live in their districts. Where those districts are drawn and how much federal funding they receive is determined by where we live. So the census is basically a deportation and extortion racket, and I really hope that government and police will not encourage people to cooperate with the census or to become police officers. Because some of you may know, if you join the military or police, you're liable to be beaten up, pepper sprayed, and injected with experimental chemicals as part of basic training.
Thank you, Mr. Kapsic. Thank you.
Not a good job opportunity for the community.
Thank you. Sandra Reyes? Sandra Reyes? Sandra Reyes? Brother Blanks?
Brother Blanks, now the chief president of Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. This is a letter addressed to the city of Waukegan through its corporate counsel, Douglas Daniel Longens Pinsky, from the Office of the Attorney General. The Public Access Bureau has received the attached request for review of the response by the city of Waukegan Freedom of Information Act, request submitted by Mr. Chris Brother Blanks. We have determined that further action is warranted. On July the first, 2019, Mr. Blanks submitted a FOIA request in the city of Waukegan seeking copies of all dash cam, body cam, video, and audio recordings leading up to, as well as, the attempted arrest and death of Avion Cotton, black male age thirty-one, said date of Thursday, twenty, Thursday to twenty-seven, 2019. The city of Waukegan appeared to have issued a consolidated response, multiple response audio, wait a minute, a consolidated response, multiple requests submitted by Mr. Blanks. The city seems to have denied the responsive video and audio recording pursuant to the As required under section nine point five of the FOIA request, please provide this office with unredacted copies of responsive audio and video recordings for the confidential review and a detailed explanation of the legal and factual basis for the asserted exemption in your answer. Please specify how and why disclosure of recordings would interfere with pending or actually unreasonable contemplated law enforcement proceedings and/or obstruct an ongoing criminal investigation. This information must be submitted within seven days to our office as of this date of this letter, July the twenty-second, 2019. So in other words, the request for review is granted. And the reason why, because we really want to set a precedence here of transparency. I really hope that something like this should never have to happen, but we really want to our best ability as a city to definitely be forthcoming. As you watch this family who stood here two weeks ago, they're concerned, they want to know, they want to have some closure as to what happened, rightfully so. I mean, if it was your son or your grandson, you would want to know. The citizen who is a taxpayer of dollars of the body cameras that is, you know, many of your offices wear, they deserve to know. So I'm really hoping that what we have moved forward here is Black Abolition Movement for the Mind-
Thank you, Brother Blanks.
To get justice for the family and for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Handy?
My name is Kim Handy. I am the cousin of Avion Cotton. I agree. We need transparency. I am also the mother who lost a kid to police brutality. I hear all these things about gaming rooms and casinos, but if we don't protect our youth, and if we don't stop the abuse of police brutality, the abuse of police thinking that they're bigger than the law, we don't have to worry about it because we're not going to have any kids to be able to occupy the space in those gaming casinos or gaming rooms. Sam, I want to thank you, the projects. That's something passionate to me because I grew up on the first ward. I watched the projects being built. I am overjoyed to see the outcome of what it's going to look like. Long overdue. I'm not unappreciative. I'm very appreciative of what I'm hearing, how it's going to be, you know, built up because the first ward needs that. No matter where I go in life, I'll never forget where I come from. I'm from that. And they say it's the poorest area here in Waukegan, but if it was and if it is, I didn't know because I grew up with plenty of love, lots of food on the table. I come from a big family. If you know the Handys, we're a big family. I never missed a beat. And the projects, Utica Street, that made me the person that I am today. And I am grateful for the South Side. I am grateful for the mothers, for the village who reared us. I am grateful for the mothers, for the village who reared us, I'm able to stand here today. I hear people talk about the casino. I go in gaming rooms all the time. I don't play. I keep my money in my pocket. I might go in a restaurant and order me something to eat. I don't play. We talk about housing and we want to see families being housing, but house, but I remember when that was a problem, only in black communities. But it's bigger than black communities now. It's a very diverse population that are in need of housing. But again, if we don't connect, protect our kids in our communities in which our kids grow up in, we won't have to worry about them occupying space and housing. I just want what's better for our community.
Thank you, Ms. Handy. Thank you. Patricia Shelley?
Mayor Cunningham, all the aldermen, the audience. My name's Patricia Shelley. I'm South Side, Waukegan. And I need to respond a little bit on Ms. Kimberly Handy Jones. Mayor Cunningham, I ain't got my hat on today. I'm wearing my scarf. You know that culture we wear, but I'll tilt my head if I did to you. I hear a lot of talk, and a lot of y'all probably don't know me, and it's okay. Beatty, I love you. You know that. I see a lot you're doing too, Brother Blanks. It's truly, it doesn't go unnoticed. Mayor Cunningham, it doesn't go unnoticed. I don't care about all the negative stuff I hear. I've been a Waukegan South Side resident for, I'm 58, all my life. I'm in Zion right now, but I'm pushing back this way because you're doing a very great job. You got a lot of stuff going on here. Things I remember when I was a kid, born in 1962, and my grandmother and mother-in-law used to take us on events, and I see you bringing all that back alive. Because see, for a minute, us from around here know that downtown Waukegan went all the way dead. I'm talking about from Heinz, Goldblatt, all those, them two theaters, all that. I remember that. But anyways, I say that to say, and this ain't toward no one, I'm just that person that's very outspoken. I'm a motivated speaker for a lot of people, so I need, I just speak, and I bring it from here, here, and here. And when it comes from here, here, and here, that means nine out of 10 is real. When I have to read it on paper, I can't communicate that. But anyways, I hear a lot about casinos. I was addicted to casinos. Do I want a casino? Heck, yeah. Because we got a lot of retirees that sit back in senior citizen homes. They enjoy that. If they done worked all their life, put something out here for them to enjoy. I don't have nothing negative to say about the casino, not that I want to go gamble because I can gamble more than just at the casino that's come here. But I say that to say, I hear so many negative things about you, Mayor Cunningham, that's because people judging you from the outside and hearsay. There's some more things I want to say, but I don't think it's appropriate to say. So even though I'm this outspoken person, I'm going to keep it to myself. But don't judge a book by its cover. And I want the whole audience to hear this. Kimberly Handy Jones say, let's get this community together. There's a lot of racism stuff going on. I ain't talking about just white. I ain't talking about black. I'm talking about all races. Let's get, yeah, get a community center to get that together and help save lives. And let's not worry about the small stuff. And the guy that was talking about God.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Shelley. Reverend Mark Rowland Hagen?
Thank you for that brief opportunity to, unexpected opportunity to pray with you earlier this evening. Again, my name is Mark Rowland Hagen. I'm a resident of Waukegan and the pastor of St. Paul's Lutheran Church on Lewis Avenue, and I'm here to speak in opposition to the establishment of a casino in Waukegan, as well as any expansion of video poker slot machines or the relaxing of restrictions in regard to them. I speak as a pastor of the Evangelical Lutheran Church in America, the ELC, which is a denomination that has long been opposed to legalized gambling on the basis that it has a disproportionate adverse impact on the lives of vulnerable people. We believe that we have a moral imperative to seek a sufficient, sustainable livelihood for all, and legalized gambling is counter to that calling. Our opposition to government sanctioned gambling is not based on a moral code about personal behavior, but rather the fact that it is bad public policy that hurts people. It is a regressive means of raising revenue in that it adversely affects those who are poor. In my previous life as a journalist, I was part of a team of reporters at the Cleveland Plain Dealer that spent six months to a year examining the impact of legalized gambling as Ohio was considering licensing casinos. At the time, experts in public health described video poker slots as the crack cocaine of gambling. Now maybe we'd call it the opioid of gambling. Further, it was clear that efforts to use gambling as an economic development tool or revenue generator was almost always outweighed by the cost of public infrastructure, public safety, and social services. Simply put, gambling was a bad bet. Especially in impoverished areas, it merely pulled money out of the community and put it into the hands of investors in large gaming companies. The bottom line is that even if gambling were to help a city's finances, it does it on the backs of people who can least afford it. That is why, as a resident, taxpayer, and voter in Waukegan, and as the leader of a faith community in this city that does much good through Waukegan to college, through mentoring and support for children and families at Whittier Elementary School, and in so many other ways, I'm opposed to the establishment of a casino in Waukegan and any further proliferation of video gambling machines or the relaxing of restrictions on such devices in the city.
Thank you, Reverend. Margaret Carrasco?
Reverend, before the other speaker takes the mic, I want to personally thank you for stepping in and leading us in prayer tonight. Can everybody give him a warm round of applause? Thank you again, sir.
Good evening. My words tonight would be directed to what police officers refer to as Code 1055, or as we know, drunk as a skunk. On August 20th, 2018, an article was published titled, "Waukegan..."excuse me, "Police Officer Arrested on DUI Firearms Charges," in which a police officer was arrested for DUI. The police stopped the man. He had an odor of alcohol, stirred speech, refused to feel sobriety test. So what's the big deal, right? The man was a 27-year-old veteran on the Oklahoma Police Department. Plus, he had a loaded gun in his car. He was arrested on two charges, DUI and transporting a loaded firearm while under the influence, correctly so. So you ask, what does that have to do with Waukegan, right? Well, well, well. It all started when I submitted a FOIA request. We'll just pretend, an officer CK. I got over 500 pages of evidence, and there's a whole controversy in the front, on the front page of the newspaper about working another job, et cetera. So I'm here tonight to let you know that the police officers in Waukegan are outraged that this officer still remains on the force. But they're even more outraged, and to my surprise, I never in a million years expected them to share with me, you can't stop drunk as a skunk scenario recently occurred with a Waukegan police officer again. But in this case, they let him go, unlike the other case. Therefore, I request that both officers, Officer CK and this DUI drunk as a skunk cop, be terminated immediately from the Waukegan Police Department. Lastly, I see on the agenda that we're trying to get the Bond girl nominated on the library board. All those people in the library, watch out, the city's trying to get your money into their budget, okay? I'm telling you right now, that's the plan. The same nominee Bond girl, in court, I was there, the judge said after filing a false police report that her testimony was incredible. And we're trying to, and there's all these campaign finance issues. I ask Alderman to vote no to Annette Darden. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Calamore?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, fellow citizens, I was asked not to speak tonight. My wife is getting nominated for something, she just didn't want, the whole situation all complicated like that. But that lady over there convinced me that when you speak from your heart, your gut, and your head, you know, you can, you can say things. So, you know, I just have one thought that I'd like to pass along. We're talking about casino a lot today, but the real fish on the grill for tonight is video gaming. Item six in the code revisions is going to eliminate the distance restrictions, I guess. I agree with Alderman Rivera. If we're going to do a casino, let's do it right. You know, the bids, the primary competition for casinos is video gaming. That's what everybody in the industry says. The bids for Waukegan's casinos are in, and no doubt they reflect a reduction in value because of video gaming right now in Waukegan. Flooding the market with video gaming may negatively affect any developer's future commitment to following through with their promises they make today as market conditions continue to trend as they have been. Don't we owe our future casino developer partner of as favorable a market as possible rather than let video gaming get a running head start on the market? If a casino is so great, let's protect its value. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Mayor, that concludes our audience time.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming. That concludes audience time. Thank you, ma'am. Item three, consent agenda. All right, Janet, you're going to read this.
Your honor. So as long as we get on with the consent agenda, items K, L, M, N, O, P are all held over.
Okay. So items K through P are held over.
Now, let me ask a couple, let me, just so we can verify. I don't know if it gives us enough time. K, L, M, N, Alderman Taylor, you want to hold those over or do you want to table them? Hold them over means they're coming up on the next council meeting. Table them means you can, you get a little more time. Am I correct in the work of the council?
Yes, I'd like to table it, please.
Uh-uh. You can, no, no, no.
Table, table takes a motion. A hold is an, is an automatic privilege.
Do, what do you want to do, Alderman Taylor?
I'd like to table.
Then we have to make a motion second and vote it.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to table.
K, L, M, N. And, yeah, K, L, M, and N.
K, L, M, and N, right?
Correct.
K, L, M, and N. Okay.
What about O and P? Wasn't O and P included?
Well, you know what? We might as well, O and P, table those two. It doesn't matter if we, we have the information we want the next council meeting, we can vote them. Thank you, Alderman. We can be ready to go with that. So K, L, M, and O, P, I'll make the motion to table those, please.
Okay. Motion by Alderman, Mozzio second by Alderman Taylor?
Yeah.
To, from the consent agenda, we're going to be taking out, at this point, items K through P, K through P, correct? On the consent agenda.
That's all right.
And they will be taken. Okay?
Thank you.
Motion, Alderman, Mozzio second, Alderman Taylor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Most of the passing carried.
Thank you.
All right. Now we got a motion by Alderman, Mozzio second, by Alderman Rivera on the consent agenda.
Oh, wait. There's a few we want to pull out.
All right. Let's get the motion on, the motion's on the floor. Now which ones would you like to take out, everybody?
I'd like to take out C.
C?
And NN.
C?
C.
N?
Double N.
Double N.
I'd like to take out B, C.
Hold on, hold on.
Stop, stop, stop.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. We need to make sure we understand exactly what we're talking about.
All right, we're, we are taking out what now?
C.
All right, I'm going to, let's go with one Alderman. Who's the Alderman? The Alderman, I got you. We have you already. Alderman Turner?
I'd like to take out, I'd like to remove the consent agenda, B.
Item B.
B and E.
Items B?
D.
D?
And E, yes.
NE.
Which one?
BD and E.
BD and E?
Items B, D, and E for Alderman Turner. Alderman, Alderman Darden is taking out item C. Okay?
NN E.
Alderman for E, too.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, E, I get it. I get it.
Anybody else?
Anyone else?
On the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman. I apologize. Anything, anything else out the consent agenda?
It's just item three, pardon?
Yes, just item three. All right? Motion by Alderman Mozzio second, Alderman Taylor, for the consent agenda, items that are being taken out, B, C, D, E, K through P, and item NN. Okay?
Yep, let's go.
Madam Clerk, please, please read the items in the consent agenda that we're going to be voting on. We have a motion on the floor.
Mayor, I just have, under the minutes, there's just a correction for me.
Under the minutes?
Yes. And that was under item, under resolutions and proclamations under Action C, I was a no vote. And I'm listed as a yes vote.
Okay. Janet, make sure we get that correct.
Okay.
It doesn't change the outcome of the vote, correct?
No.
Okay. All right.
Mayor?
Yes, yes, Alderman Kirk, what?
For NN, why are we taking out block parties? If we have a block party coming up?
No, no, he's just taking it out the consent agenda. We're going to, we're all going to vote, they're going to vote individually about that. All right, correct? Okay. No problem.
Okay.
All right.
Item number A, motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from July 15th, 2019, as amended. Item F, motion to approve an ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement for 12560 Wesley Avenue. A public hearing was held today prior to the council meeting. Item G, motion to approve an ordinance annexing certain territory into the city of Waukegan, namely 12560 Wesley Avenue. A public hearing was held today prior to the council meeting. Item H, motion to approve zoning calendar number 2588, map amendment of 2560 Wesley Avenue from CR Conservation Recreation to R1, a single-family residence pursuant to an annexation agreement. A public hearing was held today prior to the council meeting. Item I, motion to authorize the proper city officials to execute an intergovernmental agreement to join the Lake County Land Bank Authority. This matter was heard in the Community Development Committee. Item J, motion to approve a resolution to appoint a representative as a local government director to serve on the Lake County Land Bank Board representing the city of Waukegan. This matter was heard in the Community Development agreement to join the Lake County Land Bank Authority. This matter was heard in the Community Development Committee. Item J, motion to approve a resolution to appoint a representative as a local government director to serve on the Lake County Land Bank Board representing the city of Waukegan. This matter was heard in the Community Development Committee. Pass, pass, pass. Item Q, an ordinance amending Chapter 21 by adding 8th Street and Lincoln Avenue to the list of angled parking established. This matter was heard in the Community Development Committee. Item R, a resolution authorizing Corporation Council to prosecute certain nuisance abatement lawsuits and seeking declarations of abandonment against certain realist property. This matter was heard in the Community Development Committee. Item S, motion to approve waiver for noise to exceed 50 decibels on 8/10/2019 from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM for party in the parking lot at TR's front row at Greenwood. Special events permit pending submission of proper paperwork and staff approval. This matter was heard in the Community Development Committee. Item T, motion to approve application fee waiver, waiver for noise to exceed 50 decibels on 8/17/2019 from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM for Real Men Grill at Lyons Math and Science Christian Academy. Special events permit pending submission of proper paperwork and staff approval. This matter was heard in the Community Development Committee. Item U, motion to approve use of city property, gate fee waiver, and waiver for noise to exceed 50 decibels on 8/17/2019 from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM for Afro Fest at Steiner Pavilion. Special events permit pending submission of proper paperwork and staff approval. This matter was heard in the Community Development Committee. Motion to, or item number V, motion to approve waiver for noise to exceed 50 decibels on 8/17/2019 and 8/18/2019 from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM for Fest at Iglesia Emanuel. Special events permit pending submission of pa, proper paperwork and staff approval. This matter was heard in the Community Development Committee. Item W, motion to approve waiver for noise to exceed 50 decibels on 8/31/2019 and 9/1/2019 from 12 a, 12 AM? 12 PM. Isn't that 12 noon? 12 noon to 11:00 PM for Labor Day Party at Puerto Rican Society. Special events permit pending submission of proper paperwork and staff approval. This matter was heard in the Community Development Committee. Item X, motion authorizing the proper, proper city officials to settle Public Works Workers' Compensation Claim C 645 hyphen 17 hyphen 10353 hyphen 01 for a total $37,636.20. This matter was heard in the Government Operations and Oversight Committee. Item Y, motion authorizing the proper city officials to settle Police Workers' Compensation Claim C 645 hyphen 18 hyphen 10453 hyphen 01 for a total of $55,000. This matter was heard in the Government Operations and Oversight Committee. Item Z, motion to approve as presented, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Waukegan and the Waukegan Park District for the purpose of special events. This matter was heard in the Government Operations and Oversight Committee. Item AA, motion to approve a proposed third amendment to the Cell Tower lease with Vogue Towers One LLC. This matter was heard in the Finance and Purchasing Committee. Item BB, motion to grant a professional services waiver and high degree of skill waiver to the competitive bidding process pursuant to Section 2 hyphen 458 subsection I-4 and Section 2 hyphen 458 subsection I-5, and approve the award of a contract to Sierra Technology Staffing to augment the Information Technology Department with contract staffing for a period of one year or less for a not-to-exceed amount of $108,000. This matter was heard in Finance and Purchasing Committee. Item CC, motion to approve the award of a contract to Peter Baker for roadway improvements for amount not to exceed $3,475,203 of this project utilizing 2018A GO bond funds. This matter was heard in the Finance and Purchasing Committee. Item DD, motion to do, to determine lowest responsible bidder pursuant to Section 2 hyphen 459 subsection A 1-9, and approve the award of a contract to Superior Paving, Inc., to complete the 2019 alley resurfacing project for amount not to exceed $1,420,000. This project is utilizing 2018B GO bonds. This matter was heard in the Finance and Purchasing Committee. Item EE, motion to approve regular payroll dated July 19th, 2019 in the total amount Motion FF, motion to approve non-human, non-union police retro payroll dated July 19th, 2019 in the total amount of $7,204.38. Item GG, motion to approve non-union fire retro payroll dated July 19th, 2019 in the total amount of $3,656.75. Item HH, motion to approve non-union, non-sworn retro payroll dated July 19th, 2019 in the total amount of $16,796.4. Item II, motion to approve elected official stipend payroll dated July 19th, 2019 in the total amount of $5,941.66. Item JJ, motion to approve regular payroll dated August 2nd, 2019 in the total amount Item KK, motion to approve Ravinia Retro and Police Holiday Cash Out Payroll dated August 2nd, 2019 in the total amount of $2,710.28. Item LL, motion to approve vendor payments dated August 5th, 2019 in the total amount Item MM, motion to approve all raffle sale applications.
Okay.
Yeah, wake up.
Take a glass of water, Kelly. Take a glass of water.
Good job, Janet, Janita. All right, those are the motions, consent motions, uh, uh, it's been second, first and seconded on the floor, it's been read, uh, okay, roll call, roll call vote?
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
All right, those items that were not a part of the consent agenda will be going as, I'll be moving through them rather quickly. One, item B, motion to ratify appointment of Tatiana Amarillo. Is that correct, Tatiana? Did I say it correctly?
Yes.
There you go. Hey, stand up, hey! Tatiana Amarillo to Waukegan Library Board. Motion by Alderman Mozzio, second by Alderman Kirkwood, she's an educator, that's why I did that. Any question to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Congratulations, thank you. My motion. Okay. Motion by Alderman Turner, second by Alderman Bolton to appoint, to ratify the appointment of Renette Darden to Waukegan Library Board. Any question to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
No.
Alderman Florian.
No.
Alderman Taylor.
No, I can't.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Congratulations, man. Thank you. Motion by Alderman, motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Rivera, Rivera to appoint Mr. Tracy E. Ambrose to Waukegan Stakeholders Participation Panel. Any question to the motion?
Do we have a resume for her?
For who?
For Tracy.
Him, him, Tracy, Tracy Ambrose. Tracy, stand up, sir. Hey, Tracy. Yeah, he spends a lot of time at the, a lot of time with our young men and young ladies. Yeah. Awesome guy in our community. Is it the seventh ward, do you live in the seventh ward, sir? Or you back in the first ward?
First ward.
You live in the first ward? All right. Any questions?
All right.
All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Florian, second by Alderman Seager to ratify the appointment of Kate Callamore to the Waukegan Stakeholders Participation Panel. Any question to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. To all of you volunteers, not only do we appreciate you, we need you. Continue to do the hard work that you do to make our city the greatest city in the land. Take care, God bless. Items F, let me make sure we got, we got that already, so...
No, go to NN.
Yep, so, 'cause the K through P, so I want to repeat, K through P has been tabled at this time, correct?
Right.
All right, so we're going to...
NN.
Drop down to NN.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Block party.
That's it?
That's it.
Block parties? Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Taylor to approve all block parties. Any questions? Alderman Florian?
Um, we discussed this a little bit in our committee meeting earlier about block parties and special events. I know we had this discussion a little while ago. One of these block parties has already taken place that we're approving tonight. Some of them are filled out incorrectly, you're supposed to have three different addresses, and some of them are from all the same address. I just think, you know, we discussed it with Katie in our commu, our committee meeting, we need to just get people on board with understanding that stuff has to be filled out properly, there's reasons why we need this documentation. I know we've changed some of the rules around this stuff, but I just wanted to make sure we spoke about this particular problem, I'll call it.
So, let's be clear, let's get Ald, I hear what you're saying, Alderman Rivera, let's get your comment, sir.
Okay, my only comment is that we need to be compliant and consistent as a council when we approach these block parties slash events.
Okay.
Your honor, I can...
Alderman Mozzio.
I'll give you a synopsis of the committee meeting. As you can tell, we had all these other special events. And I think as a council and as a community, we want special events. The problem we have is that when people, I'm not talking about block parties, I'm talking about special events.
Yeah.
When people brings, you could see on a couple of them, not a couple of them, many of them, uh, let's see, what am I add here? Uh, okay, special events permit pending submission of proper paperwork and staff approval. So, sometimes up there we get frustrated because our risk manager will send us special events permits and they're not filled out right, and then we ask her what happened, she says they didn't fill it out all the way. Sometimes it's just oversight, sometimes the person filling out doesn't know what they're doing. Most of the time, at least, I think it's innocent, they don't know what they're doing, but her job is to CYA, to cover our rent, rear end, and make sure things are done the right way. We have got to communicate to the community, if you're going to have a special event, which we want, you got to make sure you get it in 30 days before you're going to have it, so it can mesh with the council meeting, or so you can give staff enough time to vet it out. There is a special events committee, which has risk management, police, fire, public works, someone from the mayor's staff, I believe, and one of the lawyers, they've vet everything out, make sure that everything's buttoned up. So, we want people to have special events, we just want to make sure that you have your i's dotted and your t's crossed, and you have it in 30 days before it's going to happen, so you give staff enough time to vet it, and it can get on the city council agenda, and all we got to do is look at it, and if staff's approved it, and if the Alderman don't have any problem with it, it's going to get approved. But, and that's what Alderman Rivera's talking about, being consistent and compliant. We have, what happens, and most of the time, special events go off without a hitch. Have we had some problems with some? Absolutely. So, that's what we need to button up. How we communicate that with the community? I don't know. As long as, as far as what block parties go to, is have we had instances where there's been one resident that wants a block party and they shut down the street just for themselves? Yes. All right? They're just having a house party, but they're bringing it to the street. So, that's why we require, I think it's three addresses and all that, so, we're not trying to discourage any of this, we just need the community to be a little bit more compliant, a little more dot your i's, cross your t's, because Katie back there is doing a wonderful job of covering our rear end. And I don't even want to bring this up because it goes into a whole nother ball of wax, especially with a special, special event. We know what has happened all over this country at certain events. We don't want that. And probably nobody in this room is thinking that way, except her and Chief's not here, and Commander Beach are probably the only two people that that's in the front of their mind, most of us, it's not even on our mind. So, that's why we have got to do a better job, and the residents have to do a better job, of dotting your i and crossing your t. Sorry about that, Your Honor, but that needed to be said, thank you.
No, and, and I agree with you, in Holy Heart, and, and, you know, I, I have not said this to her publicly, obviously privately, our risk managers that's been on board, Alderman, have saved us a, a good sum of potential liability dollars. For those who understand what I mean by liability, a lot of times you always look at the cost of something, because that's human nature. As an insurance guy, I always look at the liability. The liability is always the exposure that could potentially happen if things are not done right. And in our past, to Alderman, I think to all the Alderman, we have allowed a lot of our public spaces to be rented, because we do want activities, but we haven't done our due diligence on, on the backend to make sure that liability exposure, that we're covered. What I mean by that, let's go to, you know, take this to where it's laying. If we get sued and there's something that happens in the city of Waukegan's space, the city is the one on the line. What we're trying to do is work with you, make sure that those liability exposures are in its right, proper places. Katie has been doing an, an amazing job of bringing that out, so she's, she's to be commended on that. And, yeah, yeah, thank you, Katie. Because we were looking at some of these spaces that we have, we want, we want our residents and others to come to our community and to be open with it. It is, it, it's, we have to make sure that we do not get a major case filed against us that goes back to who? The taxpayers. That's what it is. So, I, I will say, to add to that, we brought in a new process, which was a little bit different than what it was over the last 20 years. A lot of our residents who are used to coming all the time, to your point, I heard you in, in, in committee, they're used to that, so it, it takes a little time. We understood that this year. The committee consisted of risk managers, the leader, police, fire, David, Jane, all of that, we understood all of those things. I think in October, is that right? October, Katie, Commander Beach, we're looking at, looking at that, revamping it to get it right. Why are we getting it right? Because our public spaces are asked, are being asked to be used much more often than they were in the past, and these are outstanding spots for us. But as more people begin to use, the exposure gets bigger. So, we must be conscious of that, because, you know, I'm, I'm, and I'm not, I'm not trying to say anything bad about you, Jack, the NBA says, the numbers, those numbers will then come back to those taxpayers. We're trying to eliminate that. Will we get them all? No, we're not going to get them all, but we're trying to get as close as we can. So, public, as you come in, you get, and you ask for these open spaces or things we So, uh, public, as you come in, and you ask for these open spaces or things we need that's gonna better our community, don't think we're trying to go in against you, it's not that. But we have to protect the city of Waukegan first. That's our job. Alright? So those block parties, we keep an eye on that, uh, and then we'll be speaking with, uh, with, with the clerk's office when they come in, "Hey, if you don't have it, we'll send them back," but we're gonna send them back to the Alderman. Wanna be clear, these go back to you, so then you can then back those because we want your signatures on those. 'Cause that's, that's kind of the new process. We're good with that? Thank you very much. That is, we're done. We in the vote? Ah, Sam?
We need a motion on that.
I said, did I get a motion? Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Bolton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Thank you, Alderman, for your input, really appreciate it. Uh, items 4, 5, uh, there being none. Item 6. A motion by Alderman, motion by Alderman Turner, second by Alderman Mozio, uh, to amend the city Waukegan liquor orders and video gaming codes by repealing the location restriction. Are there any questions to the...
Your honor. Your honor. People know my position that I think regulating things by distance is not the way to go. We've been up here for three years trying to figure out how to regulate video gaming. And no one is coming up with a good reason. Distances, we, every week or every month, we have, somebody wants a distance thing. After we pass this, I would like, if we can, to just, just put a moratorium on any more gaming machines. If, if possible, I don't know if it's possible, because again, one thing as a government, you have to be equal. So if you give it to this person, you gotta give it to that person. And that's again, let me explain, that's again why distance has never worked for me. So this guy, this person can have one, but I can't because he beat me to the punch? That's, that just doesn't sit well with me. So, I'm asking people, find me a way to regulate it. Moratorium's probably not gonna hold them, I don't know. But distance is not, you go from the center of the building, we just had in the committee, Douglas Durando, he came up, the state's even convoluted. It depends. Some of it's point of entry. For a church, it's the closest place you can go into worship to the closest school door. One is the property line to property line. That's, that's no way to regulate things, in my mind. Does it need to be regulated? Yes. It does. I think this, that gentleman out there said it best, if we're gonna do the casino, we need to do it right. So, that, those, those are my thoughts. So I'm gonna vote yes for this because I, I've always said distance is not the way to go. Because it's too arbitrary for me. But, I, I would just rather have a moratorium until we can figure out how we're gonna regulate it. I mean... Because I don't know, I don't, I don't, no, no one in three years has come up to me and told me any other way to do it. Other than, they don't really have an answer.
What about what Ann suggested?
What about, what about if you want...
If anybody wants to see me after, you're more than welcome to call me or whatever you want to do.
Yes, thank you.
We have to go on with this. Thank you, Your Honor.
Alright, Alderman Taylor, then Alderman Florian.
I am not willing to take the distance requirement. I, I agree, it may not be the best way, but I am not willing to take that away until we have something else in place. I have asked that, that maybe it be something like, they have to be in business for so many years. Um, Alderman Mozio has raised suggestions, and nothing ever seems to get put on paper. Yet this motion that was made actually during Alderman time or during adjournment time was suddenly put onto the agenda. I think this is way too early for us to be opening up where the whole city is gonna have gaming machines everywhere. There has to be some restriction. And, you know, we've talked about this, you've now opened up an entertainment area. Let's see how that goes before we put it throughout the city and every establishment. Because once this goes through, every establishment in Waukegan will be asking for gaming. And again, if you wanna, if you even thought of a casino being successful, you've got all these mini casinos, you're just taking money away from where you, you truly think it should go. So we, we need to have these discussions and not just flat out make this decision tonight.
Alderman Florian?
Um, I agree with what my colleague just stated. I think we cannot repeal this unless we have something to put in place. Um, we're just opening up the entire city then. We, we, we've just established the downtown entertainment district, why don't we wait and see how that happened? You know, how that goes? You know, Alderman Mozio said there hasn't been any alternative plans. Alderman Taylor had suggested this idea of establish business for three years, a certain number of square footage, I mean, there are some other ideas, but...
Alderman May is here tonight, and when she had the Judiciary Committee, she brought up many points, including how Homewood had handled it, and yet, nothing stuck. And it's time that we come up with a solid plan.
Alright, how about this then? Instead, instead of dividing more on this issue, I'm willing to hold it over or table it, but we, but we better come with something soon. Because three years, we're, we're spinning our tails about it. And it's, it's, it's becoming a divisive issue. Okay, and Alderman Turner, I get your point, I'm with you on it, I don't think it's right, but I don't, I would rather work together to find a, a, a solution to it, a good solution to it, than to vote this and have it, have it pass five to four. 'Cause that's not, I'm not, I don't think that's right.
What if we adopt a regulation where you have to be 21 and older to gamble or drink? That's exactly my point. We already have a regulation. It's already regulated, right?
It is to a point.
The dogs get to do what they wanna do.
But the problem is, is that the money is, is so flush for people, for a business owner, that it's like, why wouldn't you put it in there? But, I'm gonna, so we don't have to, let's do this. I'm gonna table it, but I'm gonna need a second, we're gonna have to vote it. But I wanna come to a compromise, and I wanna get this right. Is everybody amenable to that?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
So, I second.
I second it.
The motion is to, well, hold it over. Are we holding it over?
Hold over means I gotta bring it up next week. We ain't been able to do it in three weeks, two weeks ain't gonna get it done, so table it. I'm gonna work my ass off to get some compromise up here, to get something done.
Well, I, and, and while I respect the legislative's opinion on this, but I want us to understand, when we first did this originally, we did it because you said there was no regulation, that's why we did it.
We did.
That's what everybody voted up here, minus the new Alderman, because there was no regulation. Am I, is it true? The Alderman who were here?
As far as I can remember.
Yep, we just had state law.
So we just had state law, so we implemented something. And then we put in waivers. Alderman May, you are here. We put in waivers so we can then grant those things to those outside of the parlors. Am I correct? We, we do not like the parlor, that's what we said up here. So when the waivers came, we then said, "I don't want to give waivers." That's what we said, not, not would, some Alderman, I'm not gonna say, we're big boys and girls. Alderman Taylor said, "I do not like giving waivers." That's what she said. We said, "Okay, you don't like giving waivers." Then that's when this thing erupted about who gets it, who doesn't get it, where should it be, and all those. So, not only did we want to come back and, we put something in place, so don't say we didn't do anything, we did.
We did.
We put this in place. It hasn't worked for us, and it has some people, and some don't. That is not fair. It has never been fair. So not, I, I, and I'm, and I'm not trying to overtalk or take this issue anywhere. I'm just getting to what we said before the new Alderman came, now that the new Alderman are here, there are some who are anti-gaming, plus gaming, like video does, whatever your mind is, let's get this and understand. We did come up with something. And we thought that'd work. But we kept giving waivers, kept giving waivers, and there were, some Alderman just did not like the waivers. Understandably so. Now the new Alderman come and say, "Why do we even have this?" We keep, we don't, we don't say yes, we don't say no, and we still are back to square one. So the question now becomes, is this a fair? Why should the guy next door get it and, and the person doesn't? Who write his business right. Is that fair? It's not fair. We know it, we understand it. So we need to, not better yet, we will either move this back and go under the state regulatory authority, let them deal with it, and let us do what we do best. But this right here of trying to hold, not hold, say yes, have, it is not working for us collectively. So to Alderman's, Mozio's point, and Alderman Taylor, I get it. But we must find something for these companies. 'Cause if we don't, we're gonna be sitting up here in a lawsuit. Discrimination or because of this business, that business. And that, my friends...
That's what I'm afraid.
That right there is not something that the city of Waukegan is gonna get into, whether you like it or don't like it. We're gonna do what's in the best interest of this city. And that's period. By this body. This body has the pulse of its constituency. But we're not... You know, you, you, you know, Alderman Taylor to Alderman Bolton collectively, the respect that we have of one another must super exceed our personal feelings. That I believe in. We do this job because we think we're doing the best for this community. We accept sometimes criticism because it's the job. We don't flinch, we don't talk back at you. We do it because it is the job of the city of Waukegan, and we're proud to be that. When you serve on these committees, you speak on behalf of the city of Waukegan. And you do it at the best of your ability. So I accept your chuckles. I, I will accept your criticism. But the men and women on this diocese, I would defend them to the best of my ability. Let's get this thing right for Waukegan, whether you agree or disagree. But let's get it right so we can move past it. It has consumed our time for the last year and a half. Let's get it done. Alderman Mozio, it's on you, myself, Alderman Taylor, I'm charging you, let's get it done. And that's just the bottom line.
I'll bring something.
Alright? Thank you. This matter is done, until the next time. Thank you very much.
We gotta call, we gotta call for a question on the holdover, sir. Roll call, roll call on the holdover.
I thought it was tabled.
It's, it's tabled.
Oh, I mean, excuse me, table, we still got a roll call.
All those in favor of, of, of tableting, all those in favor? Motion's passed and carried. We'll, we'll have something to you, I'm not gonna put a time, but I certainly like to have it within 30 days. Thank you.
Nine orders.
Alright, item 7 and, 7 and 8. Motion by Alderman, motion by Alderman Turner, second by Alderman Seager, to, to create a, create a Class A2 craft brewery liquor license for Oui Sweet Tea, number 29, located at 29 North Genesee Street, Waukegan, Illinois. Any questions? All those, a, a roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
No.
Alderman Florian.
No.
Alderman Taylor. Question, do, don't they automatically get this license because they're in this district?
No.
No.
Okay. No. Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Abstained.
Alderman Newsom.
Nay.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Seager.
You have to vote, you have to vote.
Oh, I have to vote?
Yeah.
Aye. This is, it makes sense. Uh, motion by Alderman Rivera, second by, you don't wanna, Alderman Florian, no, you two? Alderman Taylor, you two? Okay, motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Seager, creating a video gaming license for Win Win Restaurant and Bar located at 30 North Genesee Street, Waukegan, Illinois. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
No.
Alderman Florian.
No.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Uh, nay.
Vote, my motion is, my vote is aye. Okay? That being said, item 10, Alderman's time. Madam Clerk?
Alderman Turner.
Thank you very much. I got six items I'd like to speak to. First, I, I wanna offer my condolences to Mrs. Shrank and Shrank Smoking Gun, elderly widow was regulated and taxed out of business after being in business for 51 years, a local family-owned business. Lost dozens of employees and lost her business thanks to those regulations. So my condolences there. Uh, in the 6th ward, I've got another dumpster for the Operation Clean Sweep coming up in the 6th ward on August 17th. That will be from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. in front of North School on Franklin Street. And I just wanna encourage all my neighbors to help keep our neighborhoods clean. We've had several alley cleanups that we've done, and, but it's, it's low-hanging fruit just to pick up the trash that blows. Particularly on garbage day, if someone has an overfilled garbage can when it's dumped into the trunk, truck, sometimes a little trash falls out on the street curb in the parkway. Just pick it up, it's, it's easy. Please contact me with any sidewalks that need repairs, trees that need to be trimmed or cut, or stumps that need to be ground out. I've already provided a significant list of those items to Public Works and well over 200 sidewalk panels and several trees, et cetera. But I can't catch everything on my own, feel free, and please do, I encourage you, report them to me. Uh, and then I wanna take an aside and thank the Public Works crews for the fantastic job they've done in the 6th ward, um, patching all the potholes. So I think we're almost done, maybe one or two blocks, not streets, but blocks that need to be done. Uh, number five, I encourage all my folks, all my neighbors to do, you know, do your block parties, start talking to your neighbors and get some block parties going. If you don't have time this year, think about it for next year. Same thing with the Neighborhood Watch meetings. Recently, we've had several Neighborhood Watches and block parties that were fantastic. And then sixth, I would like to make a motion for a waiver for the distance requirement for the gaming machines for the Sunset House Restaurant. Here's another local family-owned business that's been in business for 43 years. They are on the cusp of bankruptcy, of closing their business. Having those gaming machines is a lifeline for them. And without it, I think we're gonna lose another business, another family-owned local business in Waukegan. We talk about service, servicing and, and working with our Waukegansites and Waukegan families and Waukegan businesses. This is another example of where we've got a business right on the cusp of closure. They need help, and we're hindering them by our inaction on the repeal of that ordinance. So I'd like to make a motion that we waiver the distance requirement for the gaming machines for the Sunset House Restaurant. They have state liquor license, the state gaming license, the city liquor license. Everything's in order, it's just this thing, this convoluted process that's holding them back.
But, a, as we know, that if the item is not on the agenda, we cannot take any action on that, on that item. I, I think we, we, we're all in charge right now with coming up with a resolution that's going to hopefully remedy that, that situation with Sunset House. I know they've been very patient, and we all know they've been a, you know, an, an anchor for our community for a long time. My suggestion tonight is let Alderman Mozio, Alderman Taylor, myself, along with staff, and, and any other Alderman who wanna be a part of that. Let's try to come up with something that we know that we all can agree on so we can move past this so we don't have to do these things here. The, this, this is critical to some of our, some of our longtime businesses. And as we've seen, those who have been, who've been able to revive because of video gaming and other, let's, if we, if, if we can at this time, let's try to work on this process and, and, and have something before this council that we can all move forward to. That's my suggestion.
Okay, and I thank you for that suggestion, Mayor. I just want to reiterate my point.
Yes, sir.
And that is that we already have state statutes that define distances for gaming and alcohol. Uh, this, the, the idea that Waukegan has additional burdensome regulations on businesses to, to grow or expand, to engage in gaming, it doesn't make sense. I think we should repeal this ordinance.
Yes, sir.
And apparently, obviously, we are where we are, but I just want to make clear that I do not support any distance regulations on gaming or alcohol licenses. That's what I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Alderman Rivera.
Uh, thank you. I just want to thank the citizens that came out with their remarks and taking advantage of the, the, the time that's given. It is only three minutes, but it's very valuable. Thank you very much. Keep it coming.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, first of all, I want to echo the mayor's sentiments on the recent horrific events in Dayton, Ohio, and El Paso, Texas. Um, we, we need to do something in this country about these, I don't know what it is, but maybe just as hard to solve as our distance ordinance, but... Uh, anyway, I just wanted to echo those comments and, and sentiments. Um, we've had a couple of recent awesome events in the city. We had Touch a Truck last Friday night down at the lakefront. It was very well attended, especially loved by like, let's say, the Ten and Under crowd. It, it's a great, you know, public event and, and a lot of participation from Public Works, Police Department, Fire Department. It was amazing. I saw lots of happy faces, and that was an awesome, awesome event. Um, the YCC Alley Cleanup, I'd like to send a shout out to them. That's an awesome program we have in the city. I grew up in a home in the second ward that had an alley, and it was kind of a special thing anyway. But I'm happy that they're being cleaned up and being taken care of. I'm also very excited to hear tonight about CLC's plan for our downtown. That is downtown economic development I can get behind, so. Um, and I want to, and Mayor, please correct me if I'm wrong on this. People were asking about the public hearings. We are gonna have public hearings regarding the casinos in the process, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure people heard that that is gonna be part of the process as we go forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Alderman Taylor. Again, I want to thank everybody who came out tonight because your opinion matters. This is your town. This is the city of Waukegan. Everybody has a voice. And I thank you for coming and, and sharing that. The casino is not a done deal, and, you know, I, I think it's good that that be noted, that it is not, and your voice matters. And I for one want to hear it. In talking about some of the restrictions that have been in place, since I'm a Waukegan Alderman, and this was long before my time, we, we put a distance requirement in to try and stop the proliferation of the gaming industry. When that was done, no Alderman ever thought that we would be sitting here with the amount of gaming that we are talking about today. We didn't even think, well, not we, because I wasn't an Alderman at that time, we didn't even think that there would be cafes that would just be gaming institutions. This has gone way out of what any Alderman could have thought would happen. So I think it's time that now that we're here, we come up with something solid so that the residents are happy with what they're seeing and that we have a solid plan that doesn't discriminate against any particular business owner. We are not at that compromise. It's time for us to talk about that. And your input, at least to me, is very important. Any of you that have ideas that you would like us to take under consideration, please feel free to call me. My number is 847-212-4762. I want to hear from you. This is all of our community, and we all need to have a say-so in how we want this to go forward. So again, I thank you for coming out tonight. It takes a lot of courage to come up here and talk. These are discussions our community needs to have. Thank you. Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I want to thank all my constituents for constantly calling me and keeping me up to date for ours cleaning our alleys, moving the trash out off the street. I just want to say thank you. I also want to thank you all, my constituents, for filling out the block party and special events applications. And I really give special shout-out to Katie, because she do truly work hard in making sure our events are supported. And with that being said, our block parties are, as they say, awesome, excellent. And I just wanted to say also to YCC for Operation Cleanup, thank you so much. And we know we have more cleaning up to do. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Seager.
August night, Operation Cleanup, no, Clean Sweep.
Or Clean Sweep. There'll be a dumpster put in place over on Busch Court, and most likely will be on the west end of Busch, Busch Court. From...
From 10, I think it's 10 to 3, Alderman. Yeah, because it's gonna be, it's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be with Public Works, so. Mike, is I correct about 10 to 3?
It's usually 8 to 3.
I thought it was...
Oh, 8 to 3.
8 to 3.
8 to 3, yeah, I forgot to...
8 to 3.
Okay.
And there'll be a couple, uh, employees, um, Public Work employees there to help out the, uh, residents in that area. Thank you very much.
Alderman Mozio.
A couple things. I, I'll be having a Clean Sweep in the morning sometime. I just haven't buttoned up with the powers-to-be. And just echoing Alderman Taylor's comments. Best way to communicate, at least with this Alderman, is to call me so we can sit down and talk, we can actually talk. We can't talk here. If I carry the conversation, we'd, we'd be, we'd be here till next Tuesday. We all know that. That's not effective. Facebook for me is not effective. I do not go back and forth on Facebook. Okay? Call me, 847-997-7376. We'll set up a time, we'll meet. I don't care. I'll meet with one, I'll meet with 50. It doesn't matter. Okay, I've already talked to a lot of people about this issue. This is not the only time, surprisingly or not, people, this is not the only time we talk about things to the, to the community. It's not. And Facebook's not the only time that we talk to the community. All right? That's just one avenue. It's just one way. I'm much more effective face-to-face. I'd much rather do it that way. Okay? So, and, and I agree with Alderman Taylor. We have to get as much input as we can. I've already gotten a lot of input from people. I ask everybody I see that I know lives in Waukegan, "How do you feel about it?" Wherever I'm at, "How do you feel about it? How do you feel about it?" It's mixed. Okay? It's mixed. So we'll just keep going forward and keep gathering information. With that, thank you. I talked enough.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Couple items. I want to give a shout-out to YCC who did an outstanding job in the fourth ward with the alleys. They'll be cleaning more alleys on Wednesday of this week. Also, Operation Clean Sweep will be setting out those dumpsters and letting you know where they'll be at the next council meeting. Also, we encourage you to do the block parties. Please get back to me. Also, I'd like to send our condolences to former Alderman Lisa May and her family for the loss of her father. The fourth ward wishes your family well.
Alderman Newsom.
Thank you. Uh, one item. I just wanted to, um, thank Mr. Hewitt and Public Works staff. Last Friday alone, I had three water main breaks in my ward. And I just want to thank them. They took care of that without a lot of interruption. They had the police there to kind of curb some of the traffic, but it didn't take them very long at, at all. I believe it was Peter Baker, no, Caponella, Caponella that was out, and they did the work speedily. Glenflora, Leith and Glenflora, and I believe Crescent. They'll have to come back through and redo the blacktop once that area settles and everything. But I just wanted to give a shout-out and thank you to your staff in Public Works for doing such an awesome job and taking care of that. Thank you.
To that point, Alderman, to all Aldemans, right now, we are moving to, in another phase in the, at the water plant, part of that water, uh, water plant upgrade. And that part of that phase is that we're going through and doing the water flow system. So the water flow system throughout the city of Waukegan. And that requires us to open up a lot of our, um, what it means? Old valves. So as we're opening them up, and we're trying to do them as slowly as humanly possible, so we don't get those breaks. However, the valves that we opened up over the last week, week and a half, I think these are 20, 30, 40 years old. We're opening those up right now. We're gonna be doing that throughout the city from the, from the south end to the north end. So we anticipated these, some breaks. It could be some more, but it's best to do them now, open them up now. Uh, and on this, so if you see this happening and you get calls, please let them know. We already, we're aware of it. We kind of anticipating in some places, but, you know, when you open these up, and this is just, it's gonna be a lot of pressure going through some lines that we're not going through before. But that's part of, I think, phase two or three of the water flow in the city of Waukegan. So that's FYI. To Alderman Kirkwood, thank you. I saw Alderman May in the audience. From our hearts with the city of Waukegan to your family, Alderman May, your mom and brothers and sisters, please let them know we're praying for them along with them during this time of bereavement. With that being said, motion by...
Ma'am, I have one last comment. I believe let's discuss if there's an entry-free, an entry fee for the Afro Fest. I just received notice and text message that is free. There's no charge. I think it was that question was being charged or if it's free, and it's free.
The Afro Fest is no charge.
Yes.
It's a community event. It's always been. August 17th. All right. Motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Taylor, to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Thank you, everybody, for coming.